Commissioner.
Okay, thank you.
Henry.
Here.
Wood.
Here.
McCutcheon.
Here.
Crockett.
Here.
Cast Tabor on the line.
Here.
Alan Davis. Where's Alan? No Alan. And myself and Carol. The sheriff is here. And Red Rocket. He's in the room also.
County manager is with us.
There you go.
Okay, well, let's begin flag of allegiance. Flag of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic. For which it stands. One nation, under God.
Stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Stephen, would you like to lead us in our implications?
Yes, sir. Our Father in heaven, we come unto thee this morning in prayer. And give thee thanks for this great nation. We give thee thanks for our leaders. Both federally and at the state and at the local level. We pray, Father, for wisdom upon them, that they may be able to make with conviction the difficult decisions which lie before them. That would be for the betterment of the country. And it would be to the would be to awarding everybody the freedoms which thou has already given us. We pray, Father, for all of those suffering in due to the COVID-19. We pray for the businesses that are struggling. And we pray for the individuals and families and those that feel much loneliness. We pray, Father, that thou would not give us the spirit of fear. But that we may have the spirit of faith to go about our daily lives. Knowing that this too shall pass. And that we will be a stronger and better people because of it. We pray, Father, that we may regain those freedoms that have been taken. And that we may be able to do the things which thou hast allowed us to do and the things which we have set out to do. Father, we're indeed grateful for thy son, Jesus Christ, above all things. And we come unto thee in his name and pray. In the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Amen. Let's back up just a little bit. I forgot to do the salute. Didn't say it in New Mexico, but we'll be back right quick. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico. And the zeas symbol. And the zeas symbol of friendship among the agricultural. Okay, Al, does he have any comments?
We do not. I've checked multiple times and I'm assured that we didn't receive any this time, so. Good to go.
Okay, well, let's go on to the trading agenda. We need to approve the special commission meeting minutes for April 22nd, 2020. Do we have any revisions or corrections? If not, can I get a motion to approve?
No move, Commissioner Crockett.
Second, Commissioner McCutcheon.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and second. Uh, call for the vote.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
Okay, Traders report. Lori, put it.
Information only, Mr. Chairman. And it's in the agenda packet if there are any questions. But it's information only.
Okay. Then April 2020 revenue report for Ernest Smith.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Can anyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes. For the April 2020 revenue reports for grocery seat tax, we received $1,607,322. Which again still puts us over and above our budget. We met our monthly mark of 1.1 million. Overall, for this year, we budgeted 13.8 million. And so far as of April, we've collected roughly $16.8 million in grocery seats.
Who is it?
And again, this is, we collected it in April and this is business activity from February. So we're still not seeing that downturn that we, you know, were coming to expect because it's still from February business activities. For oil and gas receipts, total for production equipment and royalties for the month of April, we received $2,696,062. Again, the lowest of our $1.5 million monthly mark. For the entire year, for oil and gas production equipment and royalties, we budgeted 20.2 million. And currently, as we stand, we're at $30,200,000. So again, we still haven't seen that downturn because we're still a couple months behind in lifetime. So we should probably start expecting that one, I guess, in May, June. Especially the June revenue report will start to be mad as well. I'll stand for any questions if there is any.
Okay, Commissioner Crockett, do you have any questions?
I do not, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Commissioner McCutcheon?
No, sir.
Commissioner Wood?
No.
Commissioner Henry?
No, sir.
Okay, then if we have no questions, then I would call for a motion to accept.
So moved, Commissioner McCutcheon.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second, Commissioner Henry?
Call for the vote.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. But your first is actual March 2020 resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the March 2020 budget for actual, obviously, again, we should be at 75% as of March. For our revenue county-wide, county-wide, we're already way up beyond that, we're already at 103% collective. At 121.5 million dollars total. For expenses, we've only expended 56% of our total county-wide budget of $139 million. There is a reason for that, why we're only at about 56%. The biggest reason is that the biggest funds have not expended the majority of their expenses. General funds, pretty much right there, about 74%. But you have your road department, that's about 30%. We have our landfill, that's about 50%. Our FEMA fund, which we originally budgeted $5 million for, and as you know, we haven't made any movement on that. So they're about 9% expense. And then our fire expertise funds are quite a bit under. Majority of those are anywhere, they have budgeted anywhere from $200,000 to $700,000 in each of those funds. And the majority of those are not even at, you know, roughly 20% expense. So that's the biggest reason that we're quite a bit under at 56% as a whole for the counties because our big major funds have not expended significantly, which is a good thing too. For general funds. For our revenue, so far, we've corrected $9.2 million, which again would put us at about 170% total collection for general funds. And obviously, the biggest reason for that, as you know, is because of our revenue. We're over oil, gas, GRC, and our property taxes are coming in right on time as well too. And like I said, our general fund expenses, we're right at about 74%. So we're right at that 75% mark. Not too significantly under, and we're not obviously over there either. So and like I mentioned, the road department, they're only at about 34% expense. But like I tried last night, Jason ramped up, he has those in the works. And we'll start seeing those things, I think, to budget first actually. I'll stand for any questions if there is any.
Okay, Commissioner Crockett, do you have any questions or comments?
No, sir.
Commissioner McCutcheon?
No, sir.
Commissioner Wood?
No, sir.
Commissioner Henry?
No, sir.
Okay, I will call for a motion.
Commissioner Crockett, Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve the budget for actual for March 2020.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second, McCutcheon.
Okay, call for the vote.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. Reference Resolution R-1867. Requests from ENMRD Secretary of Provo's March 6th, 2020, request for acceleration of the year-end, fiscal year-end 2020, 2021 scheduled payment of $1,340 to be authorized in the current year. Alan Davis.
Mr. Chairman, County received a letter from ENMRD Secretary of Provo's asking the county to accelerate our scheduled payment from next fiscal year to the end of this fiscal year in order to allow them to have a sufficient cash flow to complete the Brinewell project. This payment of $1.3 million was agreed to in the reference resolution back in 2018. And we had three scheduled payments of $1.34 million. And so the state has asked if we can accelerate this money so that they can access additional state funds and complete the project. And so we're asking for the commission's approval to move that from next year's budget into this year's actual expenditures. And then send them the verification that we've done so. For information, the city of Carlsbad, their city council approved this same resolution a couple of weeks ago. In that, in that session, there was, they also approved an additional $800,000, which the state had asked for as well. I did not include that in this one. I asked the state for an accountability of the project before giving them an additional $800,000. And that, that information is still pending from, from the state, the project manager. So this is the only one that's on the table right now. Commissioner Crockett has some other background information as to the, some of the hows and whys. And they do need the money to finish the project. Their timeline has accelerated. They should be finished, physically finished. Probably sometime in August. So that, that's where we stand on that today.
So what is your recommendation?
I recommend that we pay the accelerated payment. We've already agreed to make the payment. It's just, we're going to pay it in May versus July. So I don't see that as an issue. I still have some concern and issue about the additional $800,000. And I've talked to the project manager, Jim Chriswall, and asked him for that accountability. We spoke a couple of times last week. And I've spoken briefly with Commissioner Crockett, who's part of that. She was asked to sit on that committee, the Brinewell Committee. So there's, there's just been, there's been a lot of money involved there, $53 million. And there've been some scope changes. And in their initial budget, they had omitted or failed to include grocery seat taxes and some things like that, that land acquisition or land access, stuff like that, that, I mean, okay. But show us that accountability and then show us the expenditure accountability. And provide for the scope changes, you know, they drilled six fewer wells. They changed the slurry material from grout to sand, which is probably a better, better slurry to use to start with. But they also say that the cavern was much larger than they'd anticipated. Well, show us the timeline on that, you know, when you began to understand those differences. Because there was a lot of seismic work done before and sonar work, once they were inside the cavern. So anyway, we're obligated to this one. We agreed in that resolution that we would pay. It just was in the next fiscal year. So I'm okay paying this one. I'll have to come back to you with another resolution, probably in the meeting on the 19th. And we'll see what we get between now and then as to what the recommendation is for payment or not on the $800,000.
Okay, comments and questions, Commissioner Crockett?
I don't have a problem with the acceleration of this payment. It was in our resolution in 2018, 2019 to make it. I say making it now versus making it July 1st, I don't really see much of a difference there. The reason that they're asking for the acceleration of the payment is just as Mr. County Manager said, they're going to be finishing up with the actual drilling. As the project, it goes into the second phase of the project early. So I think we should go ahead and just accelerate the payment to be paid too much early.
Okay, Commissioner McCutcheon?
Are we in any way paying ahead on this or, I mean, are we? For example, have they done 50% of the work and we were paying for 75% of it right here or no? Or are we?
I don't know that answer. I mean, I asked, you know, show me your expenditures and I would say the answer is no because they have a cash flow problem right now. So the money they've had has been expended apparently. But I, you know, I don't see that accounting to know, here's our projected expenses and here's our cumulative expenses, like you would see on many projects. But I haven't seen that. I saw what was presented to the LFC in October, November of 2019, but that was, most of that work was even well before they, they really got into drilling. They didn't start drilling until December, right? So the claims from the project manager and the letter from the Secretary of ENMRD says that they're, they're in a bind, right? Like their inability to pay the bills. So we are paying forward, but I think there's probably 70% of the project done, 75%. But this would, this would put us at 90% of the committed funds, right? So, yeah, I don't know where the additional expenditures have occurred and the reasoning. Some, I guess, was part of the land access. But again, we haven't seen what that looks like to know that, oh, okay, here's, here's an additional $15 million we didn't plan on spending because we couldn't get access to the land. Oh, here's some other, you know, that's what we've been asking for and we just haven't received it yet.
Okay. I've never had any luck with a contractor that wanted 50% upfront. I'm not saying, I'm not saying that this is, I'm not saying that this is what's going on. You know, we're going to, we're going to commit our funds. I know that they're bonded on the project. I don't think there's a huge risk of paying it, of paying it forward. I would, just as Mr. County Manager has said, would like to have some accounting on here. I'd like to see where, where the dollars are going. I'll go ahead and, I'll go ahead and, and commit this just on, just based on the fact that, that we are bonded and we have very, very little risk in this. So I'll go ahead and get, get on the funds and we will. But I will, I would sure like to have the accounting to see where we're at and where we're going because things just in my mind are not, are not quite adding up and especially if we're paying forward, so. No more comments or anything.
Okay, Commissioner Wood?
Agreed to the, and a couple months earlier, was a $1.34 million. But I agree with Mr. David, there needs to be some accountability coming up here. When it hasn't been approved for the extra $10,000 from the county and city. But I agree, there needs to be some accountability. You know, we don't know what their bind is. You know, they, you know, they show something, but that's all I have.
Okay, Commissioner Henry?
I have nothing else to add. I would just agree with, with everyone else at this point.
Okay, I just have a couple of questions. One of them is, as we displaced brine water that was in the cavern with sand, what has happened with that brine water? And was it a soluble commodity? And if so, was it sold and where did the funds go?
If you're asking me, Mr. Chairman, this is County Manager Davis.
Yes.
I, I don't have a clue. I know that it is a displacement. And in theory, they could, they could use it as a commodity. They, it does cost them to haul it off, but do they take it to a brine well for disposal? Do they take it to the potash mines and give it to them? I'll, I'll find out. I'll, I'll talk to Mr. Chriswall, the project manager, and find out. It does cost them to haul it off. They have to truck it off, but do they get, do they get money for it as a, as a commodity or is it a waste and they put it in a disposal well? I'll, I'll find out.
Okay, because what I was thinking is, is it, is it something that could have been sold to the oilfield itself? So if you could find that out, I'd like to know that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, if there's no other questions, I'll
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve the acceleration of the 2020, 21 scheduled payment for the Brinewell Reference Resolution.
Okay, do I have a second?
Mr. Commissioner Wood, I'll second this.
Do I have a motion and a second? Call for the vote.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. Purchase two trailers here for change.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. This is actually existing funds that we have in our budget. We were able to save a little money when we were buying our capital items for our fleet. And if, I can remind everybody that Devon graciously purchased two side-by-sides for the sheriff's office. We didn't have the money at the time to buy the trailers and that's what these trailers are for. So I credit Captain Moore with being very frugal with our money and finding a way to get some savings to make it possible for us to buy these trailers. So again, this is not an increase in our budget. We're not asking for any of that. We just need to repurpose the funds that Captain Moore is able to save.
Okay. Questions, Commissioner McCutcheon?
No, sir, thank you.
Commissioner McCutcheon?
What is the difference in expense in light vehicles and non-capital equipment?
That was just a little extra money that was in there in another line item that we needed to move also to get enough money for the future.
Okay. No, no more questions.
Okay, Commissioner Wood?
What further are these? Ever further?
There are open trailers.
Commissioner Henry?
I have no questions, thank you.
Okay, entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner McCutcheon. I make a motion, we approve the purchase of the two trailers for Sheriff Mark Cage. Just moving the funds around.
Okay.
That was a really good motion. That was like a really good motion, so. Cass will love that one.
Do I have a second?
I'll second you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
Back y'all.
Okay, moving, moving on. Budget reallocation for public works landfill equipment, Jason Parks.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. What were I asked you of your reallocated funds in the environmental fund of the landfill, which were originally planned for a manly reallocate that to Skidster with several attachments. We feel like this would be a more versatile piece of equipment out of the landfill for the various tasks that they complete out there. It would be a good thing for it. I'll stand for the question.
Okay. Commissioner Crockett, questions or, or comments?
Done, thank you.
Commissioner McCutcheon?
No, sir.
Commissioner Wood?
Nothing.
Commissioner Henry?
No questions.
Okay, can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner? I'll make a motion to approve the budget reallocation for public works landfill equipment.
Okay, do I have a second?
Commissioner McCutcheon, second.
Okay, call for the vote.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. Number eight, budget adjustment for Dorky Road Project. Jason Parks.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we, we put together a set of plans in Public Works and we're ready to look forward with the Dorky Road Project. What we're requesting here is that we move $805,000 from road construction and $250,000 from county guards to road maintenance. After discussing this with Alberta, we decided that we're going to consider this a road maintenance project as we are going back to what Dorky Road is, was. So we're moving this money to road maintenance to allow us to move forward with this project. And we're hoping to have this in December, or I want to rephrase that, we will have this in December and we'll strive to have it done before the end of the year. I'll stand for the question.
Okay, questions, Crockett?
Done, thank you, sir.
Commissioner McCutcheon?
No, sir.
Commissioner Wood?
No.
Commissioner Henry?
No, sir.
Okay, call for a motion? Can I get a motion?
Mr., Mr.
Commissioner Crockett, I have a motion.
Okay, can I get a second?
Commissioner McCutcheon, second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
Okay, number nine, approve this approved one-inch inch burial, Veronica Parks.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, I am seeking for an instant confirmation approval for West Zero Home. If there are any questions, please.
Okay, Commissioner Crockett, comments or questions?
I don't have any questions.
Commissioner McCutcheon?
No, sir.
Commissioner Wood?
Nothing.
Commissioner Henry?
I have none.
Okay, can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm ready. Approve the inch and barrel.
Approve the inch and barrel.
Do I have a second?
Commissioner McCutcheon, second.
Okay, have a motion, a second, can call for the vote.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
Okay, number ten, resolution and agreement consent agenda, do we have anything that anybody wants to pull?
No, sir.
Mr. Chairman, this is County Manager Davis. Ms. Roberta would like to pull twenty dash forty-three to have a little discussion about, apparently there's a little change that needs to occur in that one. Sorry.
Okay, then can I have a motion to vote about it, Ryan?
Mr.?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve the resolution and agreement consent agenda pulling A dash twenty dash forty-three and approving the rest as presented, and this is Commissioner Crockett.
Okay, do I have a second?
Commissioner McCutcheon, second.
Okay, call for the vote.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
Okay, do we want to discuss A twenty dash, or A dash twenty dash forty-three, annual audit services for Roberta Smith?
Mr. Chairman, my apologies, I just need to clarify one small change, just left on the record. This is actually in reference to RFP twenty dash oh-two and not twenty dash oh-one. So, if that was really my only change, that was my mistake of seeing that not getting caught. So, I just wanted that to be on the record that it was RFP twenty dash oh-two.
Okay, any questions, Commissioner Crockett?
No, sir, thank you.
Commissioner McCutcheon?
No, sir.
Commissioner Wood?
No, sir.
Commissioner Henry?
No, sir.
Can I have a motion to accept that line item?
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner McCutcheon. I make a motion that we approve A dash twenty dash forty-three, noting that it was RFP twenty dash oh-two.
Okay, do I have a second?
Commissioner Wood, I'll second that.
Okay, call for the vote.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
Okay, department updates.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is Jason Parks. Hey, I just want to give you a quick update on some of the road projects we have going on. Our public workers finished Chippewa and Lovin and Carrasco Road last week. They turned out the maximum very good. Just real proud of those guys and the hard work that they stuck out and got to have done. They're planning on all the cylinders this week and next week, and those will be completely done. We have crews working on my bar right now reclaiming and prepping that chip as well as off service. We're hoping to see that done here in the next week or so. Blacker Village, the paving was completed on that last week. We are installing the permanent signage and working on a striking plan, and that will be completed with the employees coming on that one. As you just approved this warrant, the budget adjustment for Door Tree will be stretching that one out and getting proposals, and finalizing proposals this week, with that one getting underway here in the upcoming weeks. With the dark part of the county, Artesia did approve the MOU and agreed to partner with us on November twenty-sixth. So, we'll be extending that from the two eighty-five highway or the Rockville Highway all the way down to Richie Street. And that one's going to be going up to bid this week. Try to award that one in the next few weeks. And we also have a hilltop going on, which is supposed to be underway and finalized and finished next week. So, we have several things going on, and we'll be expending to the majority of our budget with, I think, this year. So, I'll check for any questions that there might be at your conference service.
Okay, any questions, Commissioner Crockett?
No, sir, thank you.
Commissioner McCutcheon?
No, sir.
Commissioner Woods?
None.
Commissioner Henry?
I have none, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Any other department updates?
Good morning, this is Jen, this is OEM. I just wanted you guys to know we are continuing to do the PPE for seeking for National Guard and distributing to the hospitals and the HPC locally, Kennedy County. This week we'll start taking orders for the dentist offices, chiropractors, and other physician offices in the county as they work on reopening and going back to the more normal hours. And we continue our calls daily with more security. The Artesia Task Force has moved theirs to, this week we'll start doing weekly rather than, just one week until, rather than twice a week. So, those will be taken place on Wednesdays. And then Department of Health and CMC, we continue to work together to try to keep the others a puzzle to figure out, you know, different information that we're not getting from the state. Is that all right?
Okay, questions, Commissioner Crockett?
No, sir, thank you, gentlemen.
Commissioner McCutcheon?
No, sir, thank you very much for your work. Been doing a great job, and we do appreciate it.
I appreciate that.
Commissioner Woods?
I have none.
Commissioner Henry?
I have none, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any more department updates? Okay, moving on, travel consent agenda. If we have none, we've all, uh, emergency business. And we, do we have any emergency business, County Managers?
No, Mr. Chairman, we do not.
Let's leave updates.
Don't believe we have any at this time.
Elected official comments, announcements, or updates?
I'm looking at two, and they're shaking their heads. Just real briefly, there has been a lot of work going on behind the scenes. I thought maybe Ms. Robin would allude to some of that, but the voting activity, given the direction from the state, they've been doing a lot, I think, Brian Stevens and his group in helping get some of the kit and equipment that the poll workers will need for early voting and for the regular poll voting. So, there's been a lot of work and effort going on behind that. Early voting starts?
Today.
Today.
We're voting this week.
It, so, we've got, so we have the two locations, the one adjacent to the county complex here, next to the maintenance facility, and then the office in Artesia at our complex office there. Early voting is occurring, they have the Plexiglas, they have the machines, they have all the protection that we've been asked, you know, by the state to provide. As you know, the county, as of yesterday, had thirteen total cases, positive cases reported since about mid-March. And as I plot the data and look at it, you know, the curve fit that I have on it suggests that we should peak somewhere less than twenty and then start to, you know, I mean, we've been relatively flat. And I think that is, should be attributed to the things that are being done within the county at all levels, both from the citizens and the businesses and the work that's going on. So, continue to be vigilant. Our tests, number of tests accomplished are, I guess, limited from a state standard, but, you know, when you look at the percentages, you know, I've combined five counties here in the southeast, and that total population is just under three hundred thousand, right? I mean, we represent about fifteen percent of the state population. We've had about six percent of the tests occur in those five counties that have occurred statewide. Statewide tests are just under forty thousand right now. The positive test rate were well under two percent of the total positive tests within the state, and there was just the one individual who'd passed away. The passing was probably compounded by the virus, but I don't think was strictly due to the virus. So, we'll continue to press on, we've had some businesses open or be allowed to, some have been allowed to move forward, many yet remain closed. So, there's a lot of good things going on that people are doing. Our business, the county business, has remained open. The second phase of property tax payments is coming to a close, I think, the end of this week. The tenth is the deadline, but the tenth is a Sunday. So, I don't know if she's going to open one more day on Monday, the eleventh, to allow for that. But they've been taking tax payments, they've, the assessors have been, you know, the opportunity to challenge or petition your notice of valuation. That process ended April thirtieth, so they were dealing with those. So, again, you heard the report from the road department. You didn't hear from the facilities and maintenance department. They've been keeping all these facilities clean and operational. And the other departments, you know, all of them, we continue to do business with HR. You know, we continue on all fronts. So, as you'd expect, our law enforcement officers and our volunteer fire folks are still doing what they do. So, I'd like to say thank you to all of those county employees who are working day in and day out to deliver the services that county citizens need and expect from us. So, job well done, thank you very much.
You inspired me, you inspired me, Mr. County Manager, this is Sheriff Cage. Actually, I do want to say a couple of things. First off, since you're thanking us, I think you're being very humble, Mr. County Manager. Your leadership and your communication with the county staff and the elected officials has been tremendous. And that's what we need, is strong leadership in times like these. I'd like to think that I'm providing that out in the sheriff's office and with my staff as well. I do want to clarify a couple of points. I've been obviously inundated with questions and requests and this and that and the other. The sheriff's office is in no way, shape, or form enforcing any executive orders coming from Santa Fe. Those are exactly that, they are executive orders. Orders go to subordinates. Sheriff's Office is not subordinate to the state. So, therefore, we are conducting our business, just like we always conduct our business. We are not going out and telling businesses they have to shut down, we are not doing anything of the sort. My folks are all focused on the community and serving and in the best way that we see fit. So, I just wanted to point that out for the record. I've been asked several times how we're doing, what we're doing, why we're doing this. But that's how it is. And we are committed now more than ever. My folks are being very careful how they conduct their business, I think we always do. But we're exposed to hepatitis A, B, C, we're exposed to AIDS, we're exposed to everything, every day that we go out there and work. So, this is not new to us. This isn't anything that has caught us off guard, has made us change how we conduct our business. So, that's my update, we're continuing to move along. We had a retirement with Sergeant Mike Garcia. I promoted him to lieutenant the day of his retirement, and so he is a retired lieutenant. I just wanted to say that for the record as well, that he's gone. We're down four now, so obviously hiring is kind of slowed down. But we intend to keep pushing forward, and I think things that the sheriff's office are going as well as can be expected during these trying times. So, I'm very, I'm a glass half-full guy, which Chief Griffith always kind of chides me about, because I think he's the glass half-empty guy, so we kind of balance it out. But I really think that we're going to make some great strides here in the latter part of this month. We're going to get some businesses open, and I foresee, I can already see the oil and gas industry starting to pick up. So, I think good things are on the horizon for us. So, that's my rah-rah speech for everybody, and just hang in there. I appreciate the entire county, what I see going on in every department, every agency within the county, including all the county commissioners, I think we're doing a bang-up job here. I see some other people falling on their face across the state, and we haven't done that because we are structured the way we are, and we have the people in place that we have here. So, kudos to everybody, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Okay, county commissioners, comments, announcements, Commissioner Crockett?
I just kind of want to echo what the sheriff said, and again, say thank you to all, every county employee, my fellow commissioners, the county manager, the leadership of the directors and the elected officials. I think we're doing an amazing job, and I think because of us, the constituents in the county feel comfortable, and they know they can ask questions and get correct answers. And I just think it's been an awesome working situation, and for us to bounce ideas off each other to help each other has been fantastic. And I also want to thank the mayors of Artesia, Carlson, and Loving, because I think they're doing a fantastic job along with their administrative staff as well. Thank you to everybody in the whole house, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Commissioner McCutcheon?
I do echo everything that has been said so far, and do appreciate the leadership here in the county very much. And it's, we're in very good hands from the top to the bottom. I would like to just echo one short thing. I was driving around yesterday, and there was a sign that some kids had drawn and put on a center block wall that says, "Everything is going to be okay." And you could tell it was in crown, and the kids had taped it up there. And that's really the message that we need to have this morning, that everything is going to be fine. That do not let your heart fail you, that stand up with faith and go and face the day, and everything is going to be okay. There is a laundry list of people and countries over the history that have lost their freedoms under the guise of protection. Be your own protector, tend to your own business, and sustain yourself, and everything will be okay. And that's the message I want to leave with the county today, is do not let your heart fail you. We are all going to be, we are all going to be just fine, and we're going to come out of this different, but better and stronger. So, do not weaken, onward and upward, thank you again.
Okay, Commissioner Woods?
I agree with Commissioner McCutcheon, every word he says is riding on target. But I also want to thank all the county employees, the people that called in, won't see it, blocked the government wall mark, and then, that is, each time I went to the coach at the house on the outside, they are very complimentary on the county employees and stuck it out, that finished sure up and worked everything. And thank the county manager and all the other days, keeping us up to date on everything. But that's all I have.
Okay, Commissioner Henderson?
I would just echo, not to keep it longer, so everything everyone said is spot on. I mean, I think we're in a great county, they've done a great job. I appreciate, as I said in the last one or the time before, that I appreciate, as I said in the last one or the time before, that, I mean, all the, the changes that the clerks and the assessors and everyone's had to make, but, and treasure, and yet continue to stay open and, and serve the people that, that we're supposed to serve. So, I appreciate everything everyone's done across the board, keep up the good work.
I'm Ted Cage, and I echo and also think that everybody in the county, the employees, elected officials, the directors, have all done a basic job, and we all stand with each other, and I think that we've accomplished a lot in terms of, and so, this is what I said.
People drop love.
Okay. There is no rejection? Uh, okay, the part is fit. I'm paying the general fund, road fund for future project and operations.
Yes, I'm requesting, we recommend the transfer of sixty-five million dollars of general fund to both funds for future projects and operations. As everyone knows, we do have a piece of that is a vote plan that every year for vote confirmation, that they do not have a due funding for. And this, very similar to what we were doing with the Rockwell, we're essentially accelerating the transfer funds into this, this, other than that this year. So, it is just my two intentions, whole project plan for future operations, work with investment twenty-one.
Okay. Uh, does it have any, 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 most all of them were pulled back. And so, as an interim budget, there are some things we have to do with DFA before it becomes the final budget, and we'll do those. Should, should things change from a revenue standpoint at the end of this calendar year, I think we can revisit some of, some of the things that were pulled back, some of the proposals that were not accepted. And, but as, as we have revenue and monies to pay our way, then we, then we can look at those and, and make adjustments partway through the year. But for now, with our outlook on revenue, given we have a dependency on the oil and gas commodity prices, where they've been trading, I was pleased to see this morning that crude oil futures for, were, you know, trading at twenty-four. Starting July one through the end of the year, our outlook was for twenty-five dollar oil and, and a dollar, dollar change for gas. So, I think we're in the right spot, and we'll, we'll continue to watch that with, with great interest. We made some adjustments on the GRT side as well. So, hey, WTI, twenty-five dollars. All right. We're into money, maybe. Anyway, we're within budget anyway. Well, the oil minister for Saudi Arabia said it's gonna be forty dollars by, by the middle of the summer. Bless his heart. I hope he's right. So, with, with that, I'll turn it to Ms. Roberta, who has the, the details and the nuts and bolts there. But I think what we're representing for this budget workshop and interim budget is an acceptable budget that is reasonably balanced and still allows us to accomplish some things from an infrastructure standpoint. So, Ms. Roberta.
We need to take a break so that she can transfer over to her screen.
Uh, okay.
The other thing is our TDS went out, down, so now we're, that's why we're choppy, 'cause it fails over to a lesser circuit. And the one that we asked to approve, which we haven't got done yet. We're down, we're down.
Did we approve, we did approve it?
Yeah.
It's just now to execute it.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Did you hear that from Ms. Carol? Our TDS connections failed, that's why the communications are choppy, we're on the secondary circuit now. So, we're gonna, we're gonna have just a short pause.
It won't mess her to bring that up, but at least we can get Robert set up so that she can.
Yeah, Ms. Roberta's gonna come and share that information if you like. So, give us just a second.
I have a suggestion. The personnel thing just came.
Oh, no.
Oh, it's muted, okay. I've got four open positions. One, we classify one for that IT person. For now, the deputy position. And then, when things get better, just give me the deputy position back. I'm telling you right now, that IT person, we need to.
Okay, we can do that.
It's gonna be a wash in the budget. Actually, it'll be a savings.
Yeah.
I'm willing to do that.
Okay, yeah, we can do that.
And I think it would solve your problem.
Is it giving you supplies?
'Cause I know that was one of the, that's what they, when I saw it.
Yes. Yeah.
'Cause our, our, so, gentlemen.
Yeah. Agreed. Agreed.
Next that they're working on right now, they're supposed to have a, 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 that I'm needing to get our tracks on. Other places are having, you see that? Los Cruces did it. Somebody else did it.
Didn't Los Cruces get in trouble for doing it?
Did they? Maybe that's, I don't know.
So, I think we can do it next time.
Good.
Ms. Roberta, are you good to go?
Um, just to say, I'm on the phone with Robert right now, we're trying to finish meeting with her.
All right. We'll give you a minute. I'm gonna go get some ice in my jug here.
I had it towards the second thirteen, and Frickin' Timmy just sent me the text. I sold, I sold already. I bought it at a dollar share. I've never bought stocks before. I said, I did it on that. I bought it.
Yeah.
Two thousand share. I'm like, yeah, this, I like this little guy.
Yeah, that's good.
I bought some cheap stocks, and Holly Energy too. It hadn't gone up as much.
Yeah. Stuff's at a dollar.
Is everyone able to see the red screen?
It's got a long ways to, English to draw.
Say, I'd like from twenty, twenty, twenty-one interim budget approval highlights.
Yes.
Okay. So, before we go over the highlights, I just kinda want to quickly recap where we were a few months ago compared to where we are, and kind of the steps we take to get to this point. I apologize if I didn't sound, I was trying to roll, and I've gotten kicked out twice, but hopefully I don't get kicked out one season, but I know I'm gonna be good. So, back in January, we did our first revenue projection, and as you definitely are aware, they were pretty healthy revenue projections. In February, we did roll up the budget to the department heads, we did train with them. And Al and I both discussed with the department heads, you know, to do a robust budget to send up in their needs and their wants, so we can move forward with the county pool. So, we did another revenue projection, and we did have a kind of manager review in the middle of March, and Al and I sat down after the department requests were in. We did at that point, the department request about a hundred million dollar general fund budget, and we looked at about, and, 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 thirty-eight million dollar deficit to general fund. So, Al and I sat down, and we made a, a few adjustments with the revenue. We also met with the department heads and elected officials the last week of March, and like Al pointed out, they were very patient, they understood the condition we were in. Coming from January all the way down to the middle of March, our revenue projection kind of took a downturn, so we had asked them to cut back on a lot of the things we were asking for. We originally did, and the budget had a five percent cola, the step increases and a market increase on the front side. When we sat down with the department heads and elected officials, we did have to scale that back up to an average cola. And after further review and some other discussion at the beginning of April, we did actually have to even scale that back even more. So, we did have to take out a few items that were originally discussed with the department heads and elected officials. So, the biggest changes from, at the beginning of the budget process and talking with the department heads and elected officials, we did have to scale back our revenue, our oil and gas revenue. We were originally projecting about twenty-three million dollars in oil and gas projection, and that was still lower, much about eight percent of what we thought we were getting. When Al and I met, we scaled that back to a little over seventeen million dollars, and after further review and discussion, the budget is now sitting at fourteen point eight million dollars for oil and gas revenue. So, that was probably the biggest hit, the biggest change in the general fund. With that and scaling back revenue, we also had to make some adjustments on the expense side. We made some adjustments on our transfers. We did unfortunately have to take the cola out and also take the step increases out. We did leave the market increases for the few employees that Roxton had, had business for. We also left the incentive paid for the sheriff's department for his, for his people to retain those people that we already have. So, what we're looking at right now for the budget we guys did through is a county-wide total budget of a hundred and twenty-three million dollars. Of that, personnel budget is about thirty percent, sitting at thirty-seven point one million dollars. And our total capital for the county is sixteen point three million dollars. You'll see a breakdown there of how the capital is distributed throughout certain funds. You'll see there that general funds only has about one point two million dollars. Majority of that is going to the sheriff's department for their vehicles. We did not still need to take a lot of the capital out, especially for the sheriff's department and their vehicles and the public work, because the commission for our loop were still from the safety and county roads. So, we did try to fulfill those requests with cutting back revenue. Our general fund, we do have a balanced budget this year. So, our general fund is fifty-nine million, eight hundred, one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars. And again, it is a balanced budget, and like I said, we did have to scale back oil and gas revenue to four point three million dollars. Our grocery sheets, we did scale back, back down to thirteen point three, and we did leave our property tax at sitting at twenty-two point five. Again, as a quick recap, our personnel budget is about fifty-one percent of our general fund. And again, that capital of one point two million dollars, majority of this is from the sheriff's department, we did, we're still able to give the detention center some vehicles, facilities for vehicles, OEMs, wire service, there was a few smaller cuts that we were still able to give on capital. Like I discussed on the personnel side, we didn't have to move changes to take out the cola and the step increases. However, the market increases are left in as well as in, in, with the sheriff's department. We did have slight increase for carer, and also our insurance went up about five percent as well to float, we're all for the first stuff. And we did have to take out three positions, and we were discussing with the department heads and elected officials. Originally, I think there was about forty-three positions that were requested during the first department head review. We did have to scale that back to only about six positions. Of those six positions, two of them were in general fund, one of them was in the road department, and then the other three were in the landscape. So, what we did is we ended up taking out those three positions that were in the general fund, which was the IT position that was gonna support the sheriff's department, and the OEM for administration position, and then the road mechanic in the road department. So, the only three new positions that are being committed to are out of the landscape. As discussed, we also froze the engineer position, as we have not used it as a special That is not needed moving forward into this fiscal year. Now, there's one other frozen position in the road department, Jason Lund, he raised that position on his own account to give us more room and practical labor, so that position is also frozen, and only one reclassification of the detention center as well. So, that's kind of a quick recap of the budget and kind of where we were and where we are now. So, I will stand for any questions, unless you wanna open it up on the floor for the elected officials and the department heads.
Uh, we'll see if the elected officials and our chefs have encompassed before we get questions from the division.
before we get questions from the divisions. So if I answer some of our questions. So department heads and directors, if you have any questions, now is the time. Okay, Commissioner Crockett, comments and questions?
I don't have any. I wanna thank Al and Roberta for reaching out to the commissioners and allowing us to ask questions and have the one-on-one regarding the changes. And Roberta, I wanna thank you and your department for putting together such a great budget and, again, allowing us to ask questions of you guys. Other than that, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any questions.
Okay, Commissioner McCutcheon.
I would also like to thank Al and Roberta for putting together a balanced budget. I think that's a huge deal. They pulled some strings and got everything lined up right. I would like to, I would like to let everybody know how Al has budgeted and I believe that it's a good budget. So for the first six months, you know, we're at twenty-five dollar oil. For three months after that, we're thirty-seven dollar oil for three months. That's not it.
No, we're staying flat for six months and then thirty-seven fifty for the next six months. So we've pulled it way back.
So you pulled it back after that?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's, I think that's wonderful. Hopefully, it's not too much of a bullish outlook. I don't believe it is. And, but it looks like we're frugal enough here that we can weather most any storm. So I do, I do appreciate it and I do like the, I do like the balanced budget here, so thank you guys.
Commissioner Woods?
I don't have any.
Commissioner Henderson?
No, I would say a lot of what I've mentioned already said, but I appreciate the department heads. And we've seen this time to time again, that if they don't need it as bad, if someone else needs it, they're willing to sacrifice to make sure everyone else has what they need. And I just said that, I just said a lot for the leadership of the county. You know, I appreciate Al and Roberta for putting this together, but I appreciate all the department heads for understanding where we're at and making sure that they're still serving the county and yet not acting for more than what we might need at the moment. So just a big thanks to everybody. Appreciate it.
Okay, I think that one of the things that I see that I like the best is the fact that there seems to be a collaborative effort between all the department heads, all the elected officials to make the monies that we do have work. The one thing that we need to keep in mind is that a budget is just a roadmap and we need to revisit it from time to time as the outside, our actual environment, changes, such as if we're budgeting oil at twenty-five dollars and going thirty-seven fifty. As that changes, we might want to re-budget, revisit the budget and either go up or down. Probably, I see oil going higher than that, but who knows? So it's better to be conservative than it is to have to try to take away monies from the different departments and elected officials. So it's better to start out conservative, just remembering that budget is a roadmap. And we need to revisit it from time to time throughout the year. All big business does that and we are a big business, so that's my comment. So if we can get a motion to accept or get interim budget approval, I would hand it back.
Commissioner Crockett, this is Chair. I will take the motion for the approval of the fiscal year twenty twenty-one interim budget.
Commissioner McCutcheon, a second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Off the vote.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
Okay, the ones who are on the list.
Commissioner, Chairman Carlson, just one quick note. I did receive notification that the treasurer's office will still be open Monday for payments, May eleventh, before the delinquency date passes. So the remainder of this weekend, Monday, the treasurer will accept property tax payments. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Commissioner McCutcheon, so moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second, Commissioner Henderson.
I was wondering if we're gonna get a motion or if we're just gonna stay in session. Everybody just is going to be in here. Oh, can we all for the vote?
McCutcheon?
Yes, and you're so pleasant.
Yes.
Henry? Henry? Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yeah.
Bye-bye.
We are adjourned.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.